Make the pre-meeting weight a little more interesting. Welcome to the monthly, regular meeting of the Eureka Planning Commission. If we can begin with a roll call, Ms. Jessica. Hurry, wait, wait, wait. Do it quick while he's drinking.
That's not very nice. Commissioner Ames. Here?
Here.
Yeah. Commissioner Reagan?
I'm here.
Commissioner Benino?
Present.
And Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the salute to the flag. Rich Ames has volunteered to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I, uh, the chair presumes that the commissioners have had a chance to review that, and so we'll entertain a motion to pass those.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Meyer moves. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Phil Benino, seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? So, voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda, oral communications. It's great to see so many folks here. This is an opportunity. So, the way the Brown Act works in California is that we cannot take any action on any item that's not on the agenda. So, when an item on the agenda comes up, anyone that wants to speak to that item can come forward and share. This is an opportunity for you to share your concerns about an item that's not on the agenda. Maybe you're concerned about the heat wave in Eureka, or maybe you would like to see bluer skies. Whatever it is, now's your chance. Going once, going twice, oral communications are closed. We'll continue to our first public hearing, to a new public hearing on 627 Summer Street, a cannabis retail conditional use permit modification. Can we begin with a staff report?
So, Senior Planner Heaton is going to be presenting this specific project. I'm going to do a quick reminder of something you've seen in the past, just to refresh you on the topic, because it has been about a year since we've talked about this topic, which is onsite consumption. So, this is onsite consumption of cannabis, and you've seen this, a little bit of this presentation before, but I thought it would be a good reminder. So, a tourist from outside the area comes to visit our region. They're seeking redwoods. They also want to spend some time at the Eureka Street Art Festival, and they stay in a local hotel, and they visit arts alive. And while they're here, they also visit a dispensary, a cannabis retail store, what we call an off-site retail store. So, according to the rules up to this point, cannabis businesses that sold retail could only sell off-site. You had to buy it and then leave the premises before you could consume it. So, where could a tourist consume legal cannabis? They could not take it to a city park. They could not take it to the waterfront trail or any of our sidewalks. They, they could take it, but they can't consume it. They can't consume it in Old Town. And in most cases, they couldn't consume it at their hotel. And so, up to this point, it was pretty difficult for people that lived outside the area to legally purchase cannabis in the city limits and then find a, a safe, legal place to consume it.
Yes, sir.
For you new people here, there, there's a, a screen behind you to, to, on your left that you can see up here. Thank, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner Ames. Uh, yeah, there's two screens in the room if you, if you're in the back there. So, uh, just a timeline. In 2016, 17, City Council passed a number of regulations allowing various kinds of cannabis businesses, manufacturing, distribution, testing, onsite re, or, uh, off-site retail. In the summer of 2018, Council requested from, uh, the department information regarding onsite consumption, which was newly allowed at the time by the state. And that is consuming on the premises where you purchase it instead of having to take it and leave. August 1st, 2018, we presented background information regarding onsite consumption to, to council and the planning commission, and council directed us to move forward. September 10th, we presented to you about a draft ordinance per council's direction, which passed, uh, planning commission recommendation to proceed. October 2nd and 16th, it went before the city council, and it was effective on November 17th. And then, per that regulation, we released a request for proposals for any businesses that were interested in opening an onsite cannabis consumption facility, where you could go into a place, buy cannabis, and consume it on-site. So, why do we have onsite cannabis consumption in Eureka? Council directed us to do it. Uh, the state has begun to allow it. We have now four operational retail cannabis businesses that are off-site consumption. You purchase it and leave, and more in progress. And so, opportunities to purchase cannabis are increasing, but opportunities to consume it in an appropriate setting are not. And then permitting onsite consumption may provide benefits to the businesses, the public, and the tour, and, and tourists. So, there's a couple of different methods of consumption. There are topical treatments. These are typically non-psycho-trophic. Turns out cannabis is a really good anti-inflammatory, and so there are multiple, uh, topicals throughout the state, various companies, several in Eureka. So, you could have like a spa sort of setting, uh, and get a topical cannabis treatment.
Rob?
Sir?
You said you began with the places that cannabis could not be consumed before. Did those restrictions apply only to smoking or vaping? Or did they apply to all forms of consumption? Could someone use a topical in the park, on a sidewalk? Could someone use a consumable, uh, um, an edible?
No. Nope. All forms of cannabis consumption are, are not allowed, yeah. In a public place. Difficult to enforce, perhaps. But, um, so you can also ingest it, edibles and tinctures, and then you could vape it, uh, or smoke it. And according to our municipal code, we combined vaping and smoking to just be smoking. So, per these recent actions by city council, the municipal code now has definitions for retail facilities off-site, which we had before, as well as retail facility on-site. And there's a couple of different types. There's edibles, topicals, edibles, and smoking. So, those are the various types of cannabis on-site, um, businesses. And you can have both on-site and off-site at the same facility. So, the equivalent would be like a bar that you can buy a bottle of wine and leave with it, uh, unopened. So, onsite versus...
Say that again?
Sure. Uh, you can have both off-site and onsite in the same business. So, an equivalent of off-site is a liquor store. You walk in, you buy a bottle of wine, and you leave with it. You don't consume it in the store. The equivalent onsite is like a bar. You walk in, you buy something, you consume it, and then you leave. With cannabis, you could have both. So, you can have both an onsite and off-site retail facility. Offsite consumption consists of purchasing cannabis products and using them elsewhere, similar to a liquor store or a grocery store. On-site consumption consists of vaping, or smoking, vaping, ingesting, topically applying, or otherwise using a cannabis product at the location where it was purchased, similar to a bar or restaurant. And there's some onsite consumption restrictions. You have to be 21 even to access the facility. You can't even get in unless you're 21. Cannabis consumption cannot be visible from a public place or non-age-restricted area. And sale of consumption, sale or consumption of alcohol or tobacco is not allowed on the premise, as Associate Planner DuMichele likes to say, you cannot mix your vices. And then finally, tobacco smoking regulations apply unless the city, uh, implements alternative, uh, regulations. So, for instance, proximity to doors and things like that. Um, you can't smoke within certain distances of places. So, here's an example of an existing onsite consumption facility in California. Couple of things to point out. This does have a glass window out to the sidewalk, but it is glazed up to six feet so that you cannot see from the outside people consuming cannabis on the inside. Another thing to point out is that this room is fully contained and separate from where the staff works, and there's this glass wall here. The staff can see the people in there. And when you walk in, you actually walk in from the street into a room in here. You interface with the retail, uh, associate, buy what you're going to buy, then come through a door that's sealed, and then you're in this room where you consume. And that way, the staff is not in a room where people are smoking all day. So, this is a separate room where the staff typically are not. They can go in and out of the room, but they're not forced to be in there all day. Here's another existing cannabis onsite consumption facility. Same thing. You've got a glass wall there. The staff can see you, but you pass through this door and you're in a separate space. Here's another one. You can see a staff member here behind this bar, but typically she would be through this area. And so, she can come in and out, but not forced to be and work in this space all day. And then, the last example, and the cannabis, in this example, is passed through this window. So, you buy what you're going to buy, come through the door, and then they pass it to you through the window, and this is a separately ventilated, negative pressure room. So, some benefits of onsite consumption. Um, it provides legal and appropriate outlets for cannabis consumption, especially important for tourists and those that may not or do not wish to consume cannabis inside their homes. May reduce consumption in inappropriate spaces like city parks and sidewalks. Uh, it can increase activities that generate sales tax and provide a way for retail cannabis businesses to differentiate themselves from each other. There are some potential impacts, such as impaired driving, impaired walking, those sorts of things that will be addressed, uh, in the conditions that Senior Planner Heaton will present to you. And there could be other potential impacts. So, from here, I'm going to pass it on to, uh, Mr. Heaton. Uh, just as a reminder, if you didn't like anything that I presented up to this point, it's too late. Council has passed a law. That is the law. It is your job to evaluate the conditional use permit that's before you and the findings as to whether or not this proposed use in this particular location meets the findings and the regulations established by council.
So, there is today what you just said. This is not a legislative, uh, decision before us. The law's been passed. It's not a, not a judicial decision. We're not debating between two parties. This is an executive decision. The law's clear. We decide whether it fits, and then we say yes or no.
Correct. Or, uh, it fits, but only under certain conditions that we apply. And with that, Mr. Heaton will, uh, walk you through the actual permit, um, application.
Thank you. Uh, this project is for Heirloom Organics. Um, it's a conditional use permit to allow the modification of their retail, uh, license to allow onsite consumption. They're located at 627 Summer Street, which is right here, over in the hinge, uh, the western part of downtown. Here, we're zoomed in a little closer. It's directly behind Grocery Outlet on Summer Street there. Looks at the back of the building. And this is what it would look like if you walked or drove by. Some background. Uh, at this site, there is, um, they are already approved for cannabis retail off-site. However, they are not yet operational. I believe they're working through their building permits on that. They are approved and operational for cannabis distribution, as well as approved and operational for non-volatile manufacturing.
Mr. Heaton, would you like us to save our questions or just interrupt you as we go?
Um, either works.
Okay. Um, I remember when, um, state, when this was all happening, the state, um, the, the law was you could only be licensed for two of the 12 or so different types of cannabis activity. They've already got two. Um, we're talking, is this the third one? Does that law still stand? What's the status there?
They're separate businesses.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll answer this question. So, the state has evolved significantly on a number of different things. Um, one thing that has stuck is that if you have a testing lab business, you cannot hold any of the other license types. There is a special kind of license called a micro-business where you can hold three, uh, license types. Those restrictions really aren't the same as what they originally were when we presented the council. So, as proposed, this would be, uh, permissible under city and state law. And just for whatever it's worth, the cannabis retail off-site was approved by this body as a conditional use permit back in September of 2018. Uh, and this particular application before you is a modification of that conditional use permit to change the retail to not only be off-site, but to be off-site and onsite. So, it's not actually two different license types. It's just a enhancement of an existing one.
Okay. Might, might be good in lieu of the, those changes at the state, maybe not during this report, or maybe not today, but to get an update. I know that was one of our concerns years ago, was we're going to say yes, and then what's going to change and how, what power are we going to have to, to, um, resist the change? Thanks, Mr. Heaton.
All right. Project description. They are proposing to modify an existing retail license to include onsite consumption. On-site consumption includes topicals, edibles, and smoking. The use permit, if approved, would apply to the entire parcel, the entire building, the current address, and any, any future businesses. And conditions may be adopted by the planning commission that would limit some element. Specifically, so, again, thinking generally, the application is for onsite consumption in the general broadside sense of the entire site. Um, however, I, I am going to present some information about the very specific, uh, way that they're going to do that use. Heirloom Organics would create a room for education and vape evaluation within the existing retail area. No new floor area would be added to the building. They would be, uh, creating a room within their existing space, and the room would be approximately 10 feet by 10 feet. So, keep in mind, this application is to allow onsite consumption for the entire parcel in the general sense. If the use permit is approved, the applicant may choose to enlarge the consumption area in the future or change the nature of the use. For example, they could stop having a tasting room and instead change it into a smoking lounge. A future business owner may also change the nature of the onsite consumption use. Conditions imposed should be based on the site and its surroundings, not on the specific proposal of what they're going to do. SEQA qualifies for a Class 1 exemption. It's an existing building. Uh, they're only promoting internal modifications, uh, such as partition walls, doors, and the approved HVAC system.
Rob, would you go back to, to...
Can you speak in the mic, Rich?
One more back. Okay.
On-site consumption regulations apply. A memo was created relatively recently, um, by city staff working with various departments, which regulates specifically how onsite consumption can be done. Uh, there are provisions to prevent over-consumption. There's education for staff and customers. Uh, impaired driver, I call it impaired driver training. It's a, it would be training that would help employees spot, uh, a customer that's been over, um, over-served. Uh, ventilation, things of that nature. Um, so again, this has been thought through. These, um, regu, these requirements apply to all, um, onsite consumption that would be approved at the city.
Right. I want to dwell on this slide for a moment. Um, so, when this topic first came up by council, uh, Councilmember Mezner asked me a question that I had no idea how to answer at the time. Um, she said, can someone consume just a little bit of cannabis and have a small effect versus, you know, what the stereotypical effect of cannabis is? And I had no idea. I didn't know how to answer it on the spot. So, I asked around and talked to a lot of people, and the answer is clearly obvious. It just caught me off-guard at the moment with my lack of experience. Uh, yes, you can have a, a small amount of cannabis and has a very small effect. And so, there are these educational programs that cities are requiring, which we, through this memo, are also requiring for onsite consumption, uh, that's called Start Low, Go Slow. And this memo, which was attached to your staff report, outlines how businesses are going to have to put materials up on the wall and educate their customers on what is the effect of a 10-milligram dose or a 5-milligram dose. If you're going to have cannabis and this is your first time consuming it, let's just give you something really small and wait a little while and see how it affects you. And so, this memo walks through our expectations of businesses, uh, having an engagement with their customers and not just passing whatever they order across the counter, but actually teaching customers how to understand how this is going to affect them. Then they also have to display on the wall information about taxi service, nearby bus stops, how to walk to the nearest bus stop, uh, Uber and Lyft, whatever it takes to make sure that they are minimizing the number of people that are driving impaired. Um, there needs to be information on the wall about it being illegal to drive while under the influence of cannabis. They have to train their staff on how to recognize over-consumption, which any good bar does. Um, so, to make sure that they, you know, see and understand the physical, uh, signs that someone has had too much to consume. So, this was attached to your, um, staff report, and staff recommends that the, all of the contents of this memo are a condition of approval for this, uh, particular conditional use permit.
So, if we are requiring this of establishments, um, someone walks in, the establishment observes our protocol, the dry, uh, the, the person leaves, drives, gets in a wreck, and, and heaven forbid, becomes quadriplegic, are we liable because our standards that we required, um, didn't keep him safe?
Uh, I don't know how to answer that. I happen to have an attorney sitting next to me, the city attorney.
I think that's a, that's a good question, but I think in the same way that we wouldn't be liable if, uh, somebody were to get in an accident leaving any other place. Um, you know, we're requiring more than the state is requiring at this point. So, um, I think we're covering ourselves in that regard. But, of course, there hasn't been a lot of litigation on this issue, so it will evolve.
This is California. Anybody can sue anybody.
Yeah. And if we need to modify our, our permits in the future, uh, based on evolving law, we certainly will.
Is...
Thank you.
Great. Um, the memo's there. We read it. It doesn't, the materials it refers to aren't there. Is it appropriate for us to see those?
There are no materials. Each business has to comply with these guidelines and then submit to us, here's how I'm going to comply with those, and then we'll approve them. And so, um, as of yet, no one has had to produce anything like that.
I like that even better. Okay.
I'm going to run through the five findings that need to be made in order to approve a conditional use permit or modification of a conditional use permit. First off, consistency with the general plan and zoning code. On-site consumption as a conditionally permitted use in the downtown west zone was found to be consistent with the general plan at the time of the zoning code's adoption. Is therefore, um, consistent. The use is consistent with all applicable development standards contained in the building code. Those are things like setbacks, building heights, et cetera. The second finding requires that the site is suitable for the size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use. Uh, the use is going to take place in an existing building designed for heavy commercial and light industrial uses. The code doesn't require off-street parking, though ample street parking frontages, uh, provide street parking. The site and building are adequately sized to accommodate the use, though not so large to be grossly out of scale with the neighborhood. Finding three, the proposed use will be compatible with existing and planned land uses in the vicinity of the property. All parcels are within, within 300 feet are located within the same zone. Um, something to be aware of. Sometimes zone boundaries can create a sticky situation. Surrounding uses, uh, include general retail indoors, such as a grocery store, that's Grocery Outlet, uh, general services such as auto repair and appliance repair, as well as multifamily residential. All of the uses are comparable in intensity, um, and no existing residential uses have direct visibility to the site. There's at least one other building in between the multifamily use and this site. On-site consumption regulations, as we've discussed, would apply. Finding number four, the proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. Project referrals will sent, were sent out to departments and agencies. No comments received indicate a threat to public safety. The operation has been approved by the Eureka Cannabis Review Panel, and provisions to address smell and security are already in place. That was part of their original approval.
I want to comment on that one really quick. Uh, so with all cannabis businesses, there is, uh, pretty strict regulations that we, uh, apply, that you cannot detect the odor of cannabis outside of the facility. And so, there are, at this point, 50 to 60 cannabis businesses in Eureka. Um, periodically, we get complaints. We take them really seriously, immediately go to the site, work with the business, and rectify those. And there's been a number of times where we've had to enforce those, uh, rules and require businesses to install new HVAC systems. And so far, there have been no cases in which a business has resisted or failed to comply
Finding number five, the proposed use is properly located within the city and adequately served by existing or planned services and infrastructure. Uh, the site is, uh, at an urban location, fully surrounded by development. Engineering and public works departments confirm the availability of all necessary utilities needed to serve the proposed use. Recommended conditions of approval. Jumping right into it. Uh, the first is no cannabis visible on-site, which is required in other parts, too, but just to reinforce that. Building permits are required for what they are looking to do. They'll need to get those permits. Uh, they will need to comply with all requirements of the onsite consumption policy memo, which we've discussed tonight. And one requirement that tribal representatives, um, often request is that if any of the construction activities result in ground-disturbing activities, that inadvertent discovery language is put in place. So, that means if they're moving dirt and they found anything archaeological, that they would stop and follow the correct procedure. Staff recommendation, hold a public hearing and adopt a planning commission resolution approving, with conditions, the modification of use permit, C-180005, to allow onsite consumption of cannabis. And there is the motion, uh, which repeats that.
Excellent. We can have lights. And, uh, any questions for staff before we open a public hearing?
Ms. Meyer?
I just have a quick question. Are, do, is the city have a limit on how many consumption sites there can be within the city limits?
No. Any other questions before we open up a public hearing? I, I continue to be, um, impressed with the quality of reports and just the work that you as staff do to think through issues and work through stuff. Excellent work. Um, would it be possible to, for us, this is our first time through this, would it be possible for us to see after the fact some of those items that this particular applicant has produced regarding the training and the, um, you know, the posting and those kinds of things?
You're talking about post-approval without the ability to influence them?
Yep.
Absolutely. For educational purposes and informational purposes, we'd be happy to bring those to you.
Excellent. I say that because I'm going to forget, but I'm trusting that someone who's writing it down is going to remember. Without any further questions for staff, we can open up a public hearing? Okay. Uh, so, we'll open a public hearing. We, uh, it's our custom to let the applicant go first. Um, everyone that's interested in speaking or, or, you know, sharing on this particular topic, you get three minutes. Uh, Ms. Jessica, there's our timekeeper. She's going to press the go button when you come up. Uh, just want to warn you, the little yellow light comes on at the 30-second mark. Sometimes it surprises people. You can keep talking until the red light comes on. Who would like to go first? Hi.
Hey, commissioners, staff.
Oh, I forgot. Before we start the class...
Yes.
If you would state your name and city of residence for our record, just so that we know you're not a robot.
Aaron Sweat. Uh, I live in Eureka, just right down the road. Um, and I'm a representative of Heirloom Organics. So, real quick, I'll make it quick. The three things, uh, what we're trying to do with, uh, this onsite consumption is think of wine tasting. Um, it is a lot of fun to walk through the winery, see how wine's made, and then taste it. That is the whole idea for this onsite consumption. We don't want people sitting in there. We don't have the square footage for people to sit in there and taste all day long. We want them to try something in very light doses and, you know, evaluate, know how to use the products. That's another thing. You, you can put cannabis oil in almost anything, and it's not just vapables. There's topicals, there's edibles, there's all kinds of different, uh, mechanisms to consume cannabis. So, that's about it. Um, yeah, thank you for, for your time.
Thanks for coming down and working so hard on the proposal.
Of course.
Thanks. Anyone else? Nobody else? Nobody else? All right, you're saving it up. Very good, we'll close this portion of the public hearing, return the item to the commission for a motion and discussion and a vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One quick reminder, staff's recommendation here is approval based on the five findings that the municipal code requires to be found. Any conditions of approval also have to be based on those findings, and any motions for denial have to be based on those findings. So to be helpful to you, if you are looking to deny this or any conditional use permit, you need to say, I move that we deny based on the inability of the project to meet finding number two, for instance, or something like that, and then they go into details on that. And so just recall that the findings are really the critical nexus here for approval, approval with conditions or denial.
Yep. Yes, ask it, please.
Does the applicant own the building?
To my knowledge, yes.
And I'll see that they're affiliated with owns the building.
Okay, I'm just thinking about getting into the same situation where before, so they fully understand that, that changes that use forever.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion? Anyone have any more questions?
I have a comment. I toured the facility.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Have I turned it off?
No. No, leave it on, please.
I toured the facility Saturday and I was very impressed with the facility. It is, it is very, very modern. To me, it looked like, I was impressed with the fact that you're going to be able to go in there and tour the facility as just opposed to going to a retail store and buy something and leave. And the, the 10 by 10s area that, therefore, trying the products was, was very, very nice. This is a very modern facility, and I've toured, as most of us have on the commission here, toured 10 or 12 facilities, and this one is just really up, it's a very nice facility. So saying that, I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution adopting, approving with conditions, the modification of the use permit, C-180005, to allow on-site consumption of cannabis at 627 Summer Street.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Ames and a second by Ms. Meyer. Mayor, right? It's mayor, mayor, forgive me. Any discussion on that motion? All right, can we have a roll call, I mean, not a roll call, can we have a voice vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay.
No.
I have three ayes and a nay.
Who said nay?
Mr. Benino. So motion carries. There are five of us normally, requires three votes, we have the three, so the motion carries. All right, next item on our agenda is 2204th Street, Kiskanu Manufacturing Retail Condition Use Permit, coastal development permit. Can we have, begin with the staff report?
All right, so, thank you, Brian, for getting that set up. So it's a Kiskanu Manufacturing LLC at 2204th Street, which is located here, it's on the, as you come in from the north side of town, not too far past the Target.
Rob, if you could eat that mic, get it a little closer to your lip so that we could hear you more clearly.
Is that better, sir?
Thank you.
Ooh, I can hear that, okay. So here's their location right here, and this is what it looks like today. So since they've taken over this building, they've done a lot of remodeling, they've repainted it, in my opinion, it looks pretty nice. And I do wanna make a point, so this, we're in the coastal zone, and this is a boundary determination from the coastal commission. There's a little bit of coastal commission jurisdiction that cuts the very back, so we're not talking about that, we're only talking about the part within our jurisdiction.
Do you have a laser pointer? I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying.
Sorry, so there's a little line right there.
Okay.
Yeah, so it just barely cuts the back of their parcel. And so we're looking at the use on our jurisdiction, we're not crossing that line. And if they were in the future, they wanted to do any development, that would require something there, they have to go to the coastal commission to get a coastal development permit for that. So the project, they're proposing a cannabis retail facility. The retail uses would include dispensary-style retail, delivery, and on-site consumption. This applicant currently holds commercial cannabis licenses for non-volatile manufacturing and distribution, they're operational for both, and a commercial cannabis license for retail is being processed separately. Through that process that Rob and Brian were talking about earlier.
Yeah, and we didn't talk about it too much. I mean, I assume that you're bringing this forward and recommending that we approve it, which means it's in compliance with state law.
Yes.
But at the same time, I'm seeing, I'm seeing what looked like three state licenses there.
You can stack licenses together, three, three licenses is actually very common, so like Rob mentioned earlier, there's a thing called a, a micro-business where people purposely bundle three together. But you could have three, we have people that have up to four licenses on one location, and there's no concern there. Sometimes they may have state issues where they have to worry about separation of premises, but it could all be on the same parcel, and it could be all held by the same business.
Again, I would love in the future maybe to have an update on what the state law is so that we can have a sense of it.
Absolutely, yeah. Getting into findings on this site, so the, the project is located in the service commercial zone district, and this is a conditionally permitted use. We find that the CS Zone District is consistent with the underlying highway service commercial land use designation. The project locations in accord with the objectives of the CS Zone District and objectives of the coastal zone. And the project location and conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity, as documented in your staff report. Under CEQA, so this is subject to CEQA, but it gets a class one exemption, we're looking at modifications to existing structures, and the project will comply with all applicable provisions of the code. And this proposed use is consistent with the local coastal program's land use and implementation plan. So much like Brian's, this one comes with a series of conditions of approval. For this one, the initiation of any on-site consumption of cannabis products is contingent upon certification of an LCP amendment by the California Coastal Commission. You might have seen in the paper, they did this last week. Actually, so we, we put together back in October of last year, a update that allows on-site consumption, signage, et cetera. That's all been approved for a very long time, but it required coastal commission certification. So this is in here just to let everyone know that that has to finish before we'll let them actually operate that.
Did, no, that was supposed to happen on the 7th, right?
Yeah, so that, that has occurred, so the coastal commission has approved that. We just have like one bureaucratic step left to make it all the way done. The cannabis retail use shall not be extended in the coastal commission's permit jurisdiction, like I spoke about earlier. The retail facility operator must install, operate, and maintain odor control measures, and like Director Holman said earlier, no cannabis odors are to be detected beyond the parcel, including public rights ways and neighboring parcels. Cannabis facility operators, they have to implement safety, security, and other related requirements as imposed by our police, fire, and building departments. They must install, operate, and maintain a security system, and this is actually a duplication of a state law as well.
Wait, will you not zip through those so, so fast so we can read them, please?
Yes, sir, I can move slower. Number six here is that prior to any demolition, remodeling, or construction, the applicant must obtain all required building and fire permits. And number seven is the standard protocol for incidental archaeological discovery, so if they were to do any ground disturbing in the future, that standard language would apply. And the expanded version of that is in your staff report. And so that's it for conditions of approval, I'll let you catch up if you have any questions for here, if you're good to go. And these are word for word out of the staff report as well, if you're double checking.
Probably what he's checking for to make sure they're exactly the same.
Yep, oh, yes.
And so moving forward to our, our staff recommendation is that the commission approve this allowing cannabis retail at 2204th Street. I've prepared a motion, if you have any questions, I'm available. The applicant is also here in the audience, so if you have questions for them, they are available as well.
Excellent. Thanks for the lights there, Ms. Kristin. Any questions from the commissioners to the staff about the report? Again, excellent work, great work. With that, we'll open up a public hearing, same rules apply, if you, when you come forward, if you would state your name, city, residence, just to prove that you're a real live person, we'd love to begin with the applicant. And you got three minutes, when that yellow light comes off, you can keep talking for another 30 seconds.
Good evening. My name is Jason Miller, I'm one of the owners and applicants at Kiskanu Manufacturing, along with my wife Gretchen, who's here in the audience as well. I guess for us, you know, the excitement of being able to take this business above ground and be part of what we think is gonna be a very big industry is very exciting for us, and it's been a very challenging process as well. And we see this extra license and the ability to sell direct to the customer as a huge lifeline for us, as a small mom and pop operation. And our main focus is we manufacture topical beauty products infused with cannabis and flower products packaged for retail as well. I think that, you know, similar to the other facility, we have our manufacturing room where you would be able to view into the manufacturing process for our beauty products and our pre-rolls and everything that we manufacture at our facility, so the customer could connect with more than just the products in the retail facility, but us as a brand and as a company. And so, you know, we envision, similar to the wine industry, like hopefully being able to, you know, have people that are connecting with our brand and what we're doing as a company that could, you know, sign up for Cannabis of the Month Club, or those types of things in the future, so that, you know, statewide delivery can be an option, and we would be able to connect with our customer beyond just a single retail experience. And, yeah, I think this could be a huge tool for us as a company to succeed, so thank you for considering.
Are you, are you open to a question?
Of course.
You don't have to entertain questions from us.
No, you can ask, go ahead.
I'm curious, the name, Kiskanu, is there a story behind that?
There is. It is an ancient Sumerian word, and it means the tree of life from the Garden of Eden. When we started down this road three years ago, we had a different name for our company, and we started working with a trademark attorney out of San Diego. And in the process of that, we discovered that trademarks are very hard to come by in this country, and so we found Kiskanu was a completely clean, trademarkable name, so we have a federal trademark for that, not for cannabis, but for other products that we manufacture. And, yeah, just one of those things that once, once we heard it, it stuck and we loved it, and, yeah.
Fascinating. Are you open, Rich, you have a question?
Yes.
Are you open to a question?
Sure.
This gentleman?
Sure.
Just for my education, would you explain delivery, what, if you're delivering within California, I mean, excuse me, within Eureka, not California? Thank you.
Yep. Does that, you want me to go?
Would you explain how, how delivery will work? I mean, I call up and I say, I want X, and then what happens?
Well, we don't have all our SOPs completely written for that yet, we have it proposed as a future use for us with our retail license, but from my understanding, there's, you know, clear laws within the law with the state of California for what the delivery vehicles have to have with them, so we would comply with those laws with our delivery vehicles. We'd probably operate our delivery with a restricted hours so that we could manage staffing it, because I imagine that, especially in the beginning, it would be a minimal part of our business, it'd be more just servicing people that aren't able to make it to the shop, people that need it medicinally and aren't able to make it in to purchase it themselves, kind of providing it as a service to those customers more than as a real moneymaker for us as a business. But, you know, as far as statewide delivery goes, there's companies that are focused on that and doing that, and for us as a business, you know, and ideally, we'd be kind of piggybacking with their distribution network and not, you know, we wouldn't be trying to deliver in LA, but we might have a distribution company in LA that could take our products and point A to point B it for us from their facility down there, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Meyer has a question for you also.
Sure.
I'm just gonna ask the same question I asked the last applicant, do you own that building?
We do.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, for entertaining us. Anyone else like to speak to this particular item?
Yes, my name is Joel Ziegler, I'm a resident of Eureka, and I just find it curious as that there's nothing in a traffic report. This is a traffic speed area, you're down, your speed is, is downflowing off of the highway. I imagine that the flows that will be merging are in the range of 45 to 50 miles an hour with an median and probably much higher and lower extremes. Now, Target is upstream, and they have low merge lanes to facilitate safe merging. I think it's foresighted to grant off-use or on-use, onsite use for an area in such a hazardous merging traffic condition. Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer your question, I think it says in the report that referrals were sent to several agencies and city departments with interest or jurisdiction over the property or the intended use of the property. I can't imagine engineering traffic wasn't one of those. They were, they did receive that.
As well as Caltrans.
Both Caltrans and the city did not respond with any concerns. Correct. Okay, brilliant. Thank you, sir, for raising that question, though, we do appreciate it.
Do you acknowledge that there are large merge lanes for Target?
So the, we don't have traffic representatives here, Caltrans isn't here, so the, you, none of you guys are experts on traffic, right? So that's why you refer it to the other departments, and if they don't raise any objections, we assume that they have none, because we can't read people's minds, so we have to assume if they have an objection, they'll tell us. Anybody else like to share some thoughts on this particular item? Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for sharing your concerns. Hello, Ms. Brady?
Marion Brady, yes, and I think that-
Now, what city do you live in?
I'm in the first ward, still the first ward. Because things seem to be changing as time goes on, and I've not been, you know, attending council meetings recently, so this idea of retail and dispensaries, are those now completely the same? So I've got a couple of questions, actually, just for, so I'll be informed for the future other ones that are in my neighborhood, like the Heirloom one. So if somebody is doing retail that is the same as dispensary, then the other question is, I heard somebody talking about a, the one that's near me saying, well, this is just a way for people to launder illegal dope into the community, and I said, well, I think that it has to be, what do you call it?
Tracked and traced.
Tracked from all, but that may have been thrown out also, I'm, I'm not sure if it has, if people are able to now market illegal cannabis and legitimize it through these stores. This one person expressed that concern, said, oh, this is just a way for them to traffic illegal marijuana. And, and then the question that I didn't ask when Mr. Sweat was talking, if you're gonna have smoking, tasting, applying, all in a 10-foot room, how do they separate the smoking, the testing, the applying, the eating, in a 10-foot room and have, I mean, everybody has to agree that they don't mind if everybody's smoking around them? It just seems like, that seemed kind of disingenuous, and so I'm not sure if I was misunderstanding the thing or not, whether, because I don't think it's fair for people to have to, maybe if they wanna go in for an ointment or something, or to see how that affects their arthritis, that they would be forced to go sit with somebody who's smoking. And then, I think those are my questions, so if anybody can answer that, that would help me to know what's going on with my neighborhood.
Thank you for coming down, it's great to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you.
On the last one, Mr. Sweat is still here, I think, so I'd encourage you just to go have a, maybe a private conversation with him. On the first two, retail, I think retail- On the first two, retail, I think retail and dispensaries are exactly the same. Same words. I've seen staff nodding heads. And on the second one, track and trace, is that still in place?
Yes.
Any, any case studies of gross bungling? Or is it working as promised?
I, I think there's, there's definitely like bumps in the road as you bring on something that's massive in terms of, you know, tracking the supply chain. However, so the, the state has a, its own track and trace called Metric. This has come online. So, everyone with a provisional or a state license has access to that system. When they get inspected by state agencies, they're looking to make sure that you're following everything within the law, but also that all your things are metric compliant. So, that's very much in effect, the, the original city version of track and trace. That, that has ceased because the state has got up to speed and they've taken over.
So, we as a city are using the state's system?
Correct. Yeah, so we're, we're out of that, that game. We don't have our own separate system.
Okay. Rob, it looks like you have some.
Yeah, to add to that, if you've been following the local news, there's been an awful lot of busts of illegal grows throughout the county. The county is putting a lot of energy into completely eliminating the black market, the illegal market. And I seriously doubt that there isn't any laundering going on in legal permitted businesses. They have so much to lose that to try to sneak in illegal cannabis would be very risky, especially with the state and city watching them. We do random inspections. We have our code enforcement going into every one of these facilities on a regular basis. The state does random inspections as well. The state's monitoring track and trace. The whole point of this, one of the council's primary objectives was to eliminate the illegal market. And so, we're keeping an eye on that and I feel very confident there's no laundering going on.
Excellent. Great questions, Ms. Brady. Would anyone else like to share some thoughts or concerns about this particular item? Appreciate everyone coming out and sharing your, your thoughts and opinions. Let's return this item back to the commission for a motion and a discussion and a vote.
I'll go ahead and move that the Planning Commission adopts a Planning Commission resolution approving with conditions the conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow cannabis retail at 2204th Street. Do you want me to read that APN number? 002133003.
Motion?
I second.
Ms. Mayor moves and Mr. Ames seconds. Any discussion on this particular item? Okay, how about a voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
No.
Three ayes, one no. Motion carries. And we get to move on to the next item, which is 1020 Wood Street. The Verizon Wireless Telecommunication Facility. If we can begin with the staff report.
So, Assistant Planner Manano will be presenting this one. She and I worked on this presentation today. I modified it in a number of different ways. And so, I might have to jump in on places where she's unfamiliar with the content I added.
Thank you. So, this item is for the Verizon Wireless Telecommunication Facility and the applicant is Epic Wireless. Just to note, it's important that per FCC regulations, the city has a maximum number of days to act on this application. And if the Planning Commission fails to take action tonight, the application will automatically be deemed approved on August 29th.
If you can just pause there for a moment. This is very unusual. Cell towers have special federal regulations that we have to comply with and we can only take 120 days from the time they submit. So, if there was a reason that you wanted to continue tonight, keep this August 29th date in mind because if you do not continue before August 29th and then take action at that meeting, it'll just be approved without conditions.
So, just some general project site information for you with the APN. And the zone district is public. The land use designation is public, quasi-public. And the applicable regulations are Chapter 159 and the EMC. Zooming into the location, it's centrally located within the city of Eureka. Along Harris Street. And zooming further in, we're along Harris between K and L Street. Here's the project site with the parcel boundary locations. And as you can see, it encompasses one complete parcel, which is all owned by the city of Eureka. At the site, we have the high water tank, the low water tank, and there's a parking lot, as well as the Humboldt Bay Fire Classroom and some pump houses. This is looking north at the site from the south with the low water tank and the high water tank in the background. And then, another view looking south. And then, going back to the original bird's eye view of the location, encompassing our project site as well as the equipment enclosure and the driveway through which it will be accessed. This is the site plan that was originally submitted. It shows the implementation of the antennas on the four legs as well as the equipment enclosure within the dash lines. And then, these are the elevations that are submitted, again outlining where the antennas will be placed on the legs and the proposed equipment enclosure. The project includes the installation of eight panel antennas and 12 remote radio heads at a height of 87 feet on the city's existing 130-foot water tower, as well as a 23-by-14-foot equipment area, along with a 10-by-20 parking area. This will require a use permit and design review. Four potential sites were considered before concluding that the water tower was the best location.
Ms. Raquel, before you move on, this project requires design review. If I'm reading the report right, we are doing design review tonight at this meeting as part of the application.
Correct. So, I thought it was important to note, one of the objectives of Chapter 159 is to maximize the use of existing towers rather than construction. And this specific project utilizes the placement on the existing water tower structure rather than constructing a completely new one. And then, we have photo simulations for the site. This is existing, looking southwest from Russ Street. And this is with the proposed placement on the legs. And then, if we were to use binoculars and zoom in further, this is what it would look like and where it would be placed. And then, we have another view looking east from Wood Street of the existing. And then, along with the proposed location. Another view looking northwest from Harris Street of the existing. And then, the proposed. And one final, looking northeast from Harris Street, existing. And then, with the proposed installation. This image is what the proposed fence enclosure will look like for the six-foot-high chain link fence.
And that's not around the whole block?
No, this is just around the 23-by-14-foot equipment area. And then, this was provided at the public meeting. It shows the coverage for before. And then, the coverage for after filling that gap.
Raquel, I think it'd be important for you to, this is a very difficult map to, to understand. If you can just point out a couple of key roads and landmarks.
Sure. So, the red-
You have to shake the mouse a little bit to get it to go anywhere. There you go.
So, here's the proposed area. And then, I believe this is Harris Street right here.
Correct.
So, then, with the proposed, it would cover this gap.
So, the colors indicate the quality of cell signal. And so, you can see there's a big gap up in Myrtle Town. And then, the green is the best reception. Yellow is less good. And gray is still reception, but lower quality. So, this fills in a gap there in the center of the city.
The site is a 58,800-square-foot parcel containing the city of Eureka's water tower, the water tank, the Humboldt Bay Fire Classroom, and the whole area is fully fenced. And the project area is previously disturbed through prior construction. And there are existing 24-foot-tall antennas on top of the water tank. The project qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption, which qualifies for the exemption of negligible additions to the existing public structure as well as minor land alterations. Going into the findings, the panels will be painted to match the existing water tower, acting as a camouflaging technique. The equipment will be attached to an existing structure. And the ground equipment area is relatively small and within a previously fenced area. And it will be surrounded with a six-foot-high chain link fence. So, the area will be double fenced. It provides a public benefit and it will not impact the relationship among the land uses, nor will it be a harmful intrusion to the existing or future land uses. And it complies with the FCC RF safety guidelines. It will improve mobile communications and serve as a backup. And the public land will be used for an appropriate and beneficial public purpose. And it will not overcrowd the land with structures. It will be accessed and serviced through an existing driveway. And the construction period is temporary, approximately eight to 10 weeks. And with this project, it will provide one off-street parking space. And through this, there will be no long-term impacts to the site's circulation system. It's unlikely to adversely affect the real property values. And with the applicable design review, it will ensure that the appearance is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood, nor will it have a significant effect on the environment as it applies for a Class 1 categorical exemption. And it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. And it complies with the objectives and the purposes of the EMC, Chapter 159. And it's also important to note that in the public zoning districts, the Planning Commission has the authority to establish limits to the height, bulk, and coverage of the projects. There was a public meeting held at 139 Second Street on June 11, 2019. It was recorded that eight people signed in for attendance to the meeting. The applicant provided the information required in Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 159.022C. And applicant, so therefore, the applicant has complied with the education outreach requirements.
Do, do we know how, how many notices were sent out to neighbors in the individual area?
I believe it requires that it's sent within 500 feet of the project location, which the applicant did. From my understanding, they provided the radius for which it was sent out and the exact message. And I have that on file.
Okay. And did they offer free pizza? Just kidding.
I wish. So, the 1996 Telecommunication Acts prevents local jurisdictions from denying a WTF based on potential or perceived health hazards if the project meets the radio frequency emission threshold set by the FCC.
Wait a minute. Let me keep that there, please. So, if I'm understanding that right, federal law passed in 1996 basically is saying that they've already established what the safe levels are and aren't and that we do not have the option of varying or of basing and a denial on our greater understanding of the true dangers defined in the federal code.
That's exactly right. And there's a series of slides coming up that'll show you the required report and the analysis of safety.
So, city attorney, would you represent us if we broke that federal law? And would you come get us out of jail?
I would certainly not recommend doing that.
And in reviewing the report, the proposed WTF is compliant with FCC's RF safety guidelines. Going through this report, which is attached in the staff report, it was prepared by D-Tech on December 21, 2018. And just to highlight some of the main findings, it goes through the exposure levels at the ground level, which are less than 5%. And then, if we look at the exposure levels at the catwalk, which is at an elevation of 102 feet, they're between 5% and 100%. And then, the exposure levels at the antenna level, which is approximately 87 feet, they're between 5 and 100% and 100. And I believe that's 1,000. And between 500 and 5,000. And again, it's important to note that this is at the elevation height.
And so, those are exposure, exposure to what?
Exposure, I address that on the following slides.
Okay.
If you would like to wait a moment.
Okay.
So, then, the last portion is the mitigated exposure levels at antenna level, which are still greater than 5%, but not above the levels permitted by the FCC. And then, so they have a conclusion for the report. But to sum that up to what it basically says is that there is a maximum permissible exposure level. And beyond the 65 feet, the exposure levels are predicted to be below the FCC's most stringent general population MPE limits.
So, it sounds like for someone to go up on the tower, they're going to have to power down the antennas to avoid the dangerous exposure levels.
No. There are other safety requirements. So, in order to get that close to them, you have to have a certain kind of training. So, you don't necessarily have to turn it off, but you have to be qualified and trained to be up there. And so, our particular staff, in order to go up onto the tower, are going to have to receive special training.
Some kind of special suit they have to wear or?
And time limits. You don't want to, you know, like take your lunch break and hang out next to them. But yeah, yeah, there's a whole series of trainings that our staff will have to go through in order to be that close.
So, to illustrate this point, there is a radius for the water tower. And then, if you move out 80 feet, there isn't a structure within that radius. And again, at, this is at ground level, not at the elevation height where those exposure limits are higher.
If I can contribute to that. So, the, the report found that anything further than 65 feet from the panels is safe. So, the panels are 87 feet off the ground. So, you could stand directly under them and you would be under that 5% threshold, which is required. In order to get close enough to be within that 5%, you'd have to gain elevation of 15 feet, have to get on a tall ladder. And the closest structure from a plan view is 80 feet away, which is greater than 65 and also not elevated 87 feet up in the air. And so, there's nothing within that 65-foot radius, period. There's nothing in the 65-foot radius of the panels.
So, the boys, the, is it, not Boys Club, the, the building to the left? Yeah, right there. That's 85 feet?
135.
So, with the project, there are conditions of approval. And this is from the report. There are certain signs that need to be installed at antenna access points, gate entrances, or climbing access points. As well as access to the facility must be kept locked to restrict access by the general public. And inadvertent discovery protocol is also included as a condition of approval. Staff recommends to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission approving with conditions the design review and adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission approving with conditions the use permit. And the suggested motion is there for you. And the applicant is here if you have questions.
Excellent. So first of all?
Wait, could you go back to the very first page on the, I want to read the August 29th statement? No, you had it there for a second.
Said the planning commission does not take action tonight, the application will automatically be deemed approved per federal law on August 29th.
So, we can't deny it?
We can't. We could, uh, we could schedule a special.
We could, but it's no good.
If we, if we deny it. Uh, yes, you technically could deny it. It's if you don't take action. So sometimes through debate and discussion, you decide that you need additional time.
Right.
And you might continue it to the next meeting.
Right.
The next meeting's not till September. According to federal law, we have to act on this within a hundred and twenty days of receiving the application, or it's automatically deemed complete. So that's not to say that you can't deny it, it's to say that you must act either tonight or very quickly, or it will just automatically be approved.
Well, but, but if we acted tonight to deny it, then what happens to the August 29th time?
Nothing. Action has been taken.
Goes, goes on?
Yeah, I think the August 29th date is just to warn you that if you don't take action, something will happen by operation of law on the 29th. If you take action tonight and denying it is definitely taking action.
Then, then we could be put it off to November, or any day.
No.
No?
No, I think of it as a permit streamlining requirement. So there are state laws about permit streamlining that says the city has to act on applications within a certain amount of time, or they're automatically approved. Doesn't mean you can't deny them. It doesn't mean that you can't come up with conditions. It just means we have to act quickly, if we're going to act at all. So one strategy would be to do nothing, let the time pass by, and it would be automatically approved. So if you wanted it to be approved, and you didn't want to do any work, you could just do nothing.
Thanks for that encouragement, Rob.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm sort of confused on... The people here may, may want to talk, and, and, but it, it, it's not going to have any effect, even though the people may say, "We don't want it."
So they can say they don't want it, and you can agree with them, and make a finding to deny it, and then you have taken action before August 29th, and, and then it's all good.
But we, we've taken an action by denying it.
Correct. That's what it's saying. You have to take an action before August 29th, or it's approved. Doesn't say what your action has to be, it just says you have to take an action, or it's approved.
Okay, thank you.
And if we act to deny it, we have to base that on certain findings. And it would be perfectly acceptable for the applicant to reapply with a new application, addressing the findings that we found. And then it would come back before us, the clock would start over, and it'd come back before us, correct?
Yes, and there are complications with federal law about denying wireless transmission facilities. Kristin, you have any advice on that? No?
But what you're saying is if we were to continue it tonight, we'd have to continue it to a meeting before August 29th.
Precisely.
A special meeting, and it would have to be a noticed meeting, so we'd have to...
Ten days.
Ten days, yeah.
Well, it could continue. It could be continued to tomorrow, as long as it's continued tonight to a date certain. Tonight's meeting was noticed, so it doesn't have to be ten days.
Oh, okay.
It just has to be before August 29th.
Has to, yeah, okay.
Good questions, everyone. Any other questions for staff about this particular report?
Oh, I have a lot of questions.
Well, why don't you ask one, and then we'll give somebody else a turn.
Because mine are important.
I know. We'll, we'll get to all of them, but just one at a time.
Why Verizon?
Uh, you'd have to ask the applicant. So we don't regulate the business, we regulate the use, so...
I have a related question. What is the relationship between Verizon and Epic? I'm not sure how that works.
Unaware, and not something we regulate, so we didn't ask. So any applicant can apply for a use, which business they work for or work with isn't a component of our regulations.
Is the applicant here?
Well, uh...
Okay.
We'll have, no, hang on, we'll have a, we'll have a public hearing in a minute. We are more than a regulating body in a sense that we're the owner, the, the city of Eureka is the owner of the property, we're the landlord. And so somebody in the city must know. I'm, I'm curious about how this, what was, did we issue a request for proposal? We had multiple people present, um, you know, present proposals, and we chose the best one? How, how did that happen?
You know, was it, did it go out for bids?
No, to my knowledge, no. Uh, no, the applicant approached the city, uh, been working with Public Works and the city manager, our property management, uh, team, and to my knowledge, no, there was no...
People, US Cellular, six, five, six, seven years ago, wanted to go on that tower, and it was denied, or not even...
Not entertained.
Not even considered.
Yeah.
So what changed?
Uh, I wasn't with the city at the time, so I can't speak to that one.
Well, neither would I, but we can make it up.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm unaware of the history of previous applications.
Question from this end of the dais.
I'm just reading through some of these comments we were given, and it's coming up over and over about using public property for private gain. So can you speak to that? What are the standards for that, as far as the city goes?
Kristin, or Raquel, is there anything in the municipal code that speaks to that?
General plan? Madam City Attorney?
I mean, the, kind of a gift of public funds analysis doesn't work here, because we're going to get a benefit as well. So we're not just giving it away for private gain, we're entering into a mutually beneficial agreement here, so...
Does that benefit monetary?
I assume so.
Yes.
Yeah, I assume there will be a lease, and they will pay...
What?
There, there will be a lease. Yeah, the company will lease the space from the city.
I have the lease.
And now, the antennas that are on the tower already are, are those, they're not cell antennas, or something to do with internal city communications?
Yes, um, the city has multiple facilities throughout the city and beyond the city limits, believe it or not. And all of our computers all operate on a particular network, and that's how they communicate with one another. So it's all sent to that signal, which then is boosted to all of the other facilities.
And there are also radio communications for public safety.
Right, so the, the police department, when they use their walkie-talkies, um, you know, it's, it's a communication array on top of the tower there.
Basic answer to your question is, we don't, we don't have restrictions on, on using public land for, for lease purposes, for all sorts of businesses.
Yeah, but I mean, I would assume...
So who determined, I have the lease here, it was not in our packet, I had to go into the office today and ask for a lease. Who determined how much the lease was going to be?
The city manager acts on behalf of the city council as the property manager.
Brian Given, Griven?
Brian Gerving is the Public Works Director, so the city manager would, yep, he would have delegated, the city manager would have delegated authority to the Public Works Director in this particular case.
I called, uh, a guy today who owned, uh, who, who ran a cell, tel, his cell phones. And he was with the US Cellular, and that's how I got that information. But it, I, and I told him how much the lease was going to be. This is eleven hundred dollars a month. Other people in Eureka are paying a heck of a lot more than eleven hundred dollars a month, and don't have ninety-five-foot towers. So why was that eleven, how was that eleven hundred determined? I mean, that's no money. I mean, there's, there's, I, he told me that there's a guy, there's a, Humboldt County is paying thirteen thousand a month for an antenna. That's a big difference, if it's true.
And I think, I mean, I, I share that concern, in that one of the findings that we must meet, uh, find is that the proposed location of the conditional use, and the conditions which it would be operated and maintained would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. I mean, without a, a grasp of how the lease and, and how the business arrangement, you know, normally, we're looking at code, but, and as it, um, as it applies to a property owner, or a property owner and a landlord, and, and we're not concerned with that, we're just concerned with the use.
We're the property owner.
In this particular case, we are the landlord, and so I feel like part of this, um, we have a certain obligation duty to make sure that the city is getting, that the process was fair to all of the city residents that might want to put communications gear on there, and that the return to the city is a fair value with, via some type of public format. And it doesn't sound like that was included in any of our process.
So none of us were involved in any of that component of it. We're really evaluating the land use and the conditional use permit. So if you feel like you need questions to these specific, or answers to these specific questions, the best that I can offer you is that we continue this meeting and invite the Public Works Director, and/or city manager, or representative of, of property management to be present to go into the details of those kinds of questions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff about this report? Any other issues?
Or, or we can just go on record. I can just go on record saying, I don't think we're charged getting a fair value for this, this is, this is a valuable piece of property. You guys aren't listening at all.
I'm listening. I can multitask.
So I, I want to go on record as saying, I, I think that this is probably the most valuable piece of property in, in Eureka for a tower, is this covers it all. And, and we're not getting a fair value, I don't think.
Did you say it covers it all?
Well, yeah.
No, it doesn't. You got to look at the, the thing in your report. It doesn't show all.
So that's, it's not the time for debate, it's the time for asking...
I'm, I'm just, I, he mentioned something.
It covers more.
Covers a lot, but it doesn't cover all, it just covers that, mostly that section of the hurdle town.
Gentlemen, this is not the opportunity for debate, this is opportunity to ask staff questions, we can debate in a minute. Yeah.
So the, the difficult thing here is that I'm not sure that there is a nexus for what you're concerned about as an actual component of the use permit.
Hang on, hang on, Mitch.
Wait, wait, Rob.
Go ahead.
Can we get out? I mean, because this, this is signed already.
Whether or not we can, may not be relevant to the City of Eureka Municipal Code.
May not be relevant for this discussion tonight.
Correct.
But still, it's the city of Eureka who we're representing. Can we get out of this, this?
So what I would say is...
Are we bound by this lease signed on, on August the 24th, signed?
So what you're representing tonight is the Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 155, Article 4, which goes into use permits.
That's exactly right, I was going to quote that.
Yeah. Uh, you're not acting as the city's property manager. So looking at the regulations of Chapter 155, Article 4, if you can find a finding that indicates that there's a reason for questioning the particular application or for denial, that's one thing. But make sure that you're looking at that particular chapter as the planning commission, you don't serve as the city's property manager, only as the authority over conditional use permits. Does that clarify anything for you?
I don't know. But do we have any other questions for staff?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So are, this, am I to understand that the staff believes that there is a public benefit to this? Because I'm scrolling back and forth between these coverage areas, and it doesn't actually seem that it's boosting coverage for a large part of Eureka, but a very specific part of Eureka. And also, you're also saying that this will boost emergency services communications?
No, um, it won't boost emergency service communications.
She mentioned the, you guys mentioned...
Yeah, could you explain that then, Kristin?
By filling in that area that's on the map, um, that was on the slides, and I'm, I think it's in your staff report, I'm just not sure what page, um, it's going to improve the coverage. So where there might be, um, less coverage, or less availability of cell service, adding this tower at this location is going to fill that in. So police, fire, ambulance, the public, all of them are going to benefit potentially from this if they are on Verizon.
So a resident that calls with an emergency with this equipment, their call will likely be clearer and more understandable to the dispatcher, so that the proper personnel are sent out in a more timely manner. Is that what you're saying?
If the people are living farther...
Hang on, hang on, um, hang on, ask. Is that what you're saying?
It boosts the ability of them, of their cellphone to make those calls and keep those calls.
All right, okay.
But only if they're using Verizon.
Well, not exactly.
Hang on just a minute, we got a question, Mr. Meyer has a question, you'll be next, Joe.
I don't know if we're, if this installation is going to share with other companies, that would be a question for the applicant.
But in my experience, TrackPhone piggybacks on all carriers. So it's, would maybe just be Verizon people, but also all TrackPhone people would be able to use it.
Any other questions for staff? Good questions.
I can provide a little more clarity here, so I've been texting with the Public Works Director. Public Works Director says, uh, that's not an issue for the planning commission or the wireless transmission facility permit, the lease is not exclusive, so it does not preclude others. So other cell providers could lease additional space on the legs of the tower.
On what?
On the towers. The tower could include other providers, so there's plenty of space for competition.
Could you text tip?
That's true, except Verizon's at ninety-four, or five, what is it, ninety-four feet?
Eighty-seven to the bottom of the panels.
Ninety-four feet, so the, what, what the public director is saying is, you could lease something at fifty feet.
I think there's six legs, and these, this project uses four of them. So there's two legs available at the height, and, you know, there's other space, yeah. I, I can't speak to...
It couldn't go as high, though.
On two of the legs, they could.
And could you ask him how we arrived at the price? But, uh...
Um, I'm not sure that that's an appropriate thing to get into for the use permit.
Okay.
It may not be, but it's, it's the city of Eureka that we're trying to protect.
Agreed, agreed.
Chuck, I, I want to stand up and say that.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Meyer, Mayor.
Is there noise associated with these antennas?
I don't believe so, but if I'm incorrect on that, the applicant can speak to that further.
And one of the things that we've, um, that we've worked with the applicant on was whether or not they were going to have backup generators, as a lot of cell tower sites do. And they've indicated that they will not, it'll be battery backup.
And I've been on top of the post office building just around the corner here, um, brick building, um, there's pretty substantial, um, cell array up there, and I don't recall any noise. There's also an array on top of the professional building where Domino's is, and those panels are almost identical to these ones, except they're painted red, uh, and you can't even see them when you drive by. But if you ever drive by that building, check out the red panels that are up at the top. These ones were painted blue to match the tower, those are painted red. Uh, I don't recall any noise from those either.
We could do murals on the, on the things.
Any other questions for staff?
I'm sorry, do you have one more question?
Yes, as, as many, this is why we're here.
I'm just wondering, there are cell current, there are existing cell towers close nearby? And is that an issue as far as the radiation, or whatever in the air people are concerned about, just that there's more going to be in that area?
Uh, good question. There are, there's a church just to the west. What's it called? Do you recall?
The Hebrew Christian.
Hebrew Christian Church, and it has a number of, uh, and I think there's four towers that just stand up, uh, and you, you might not immediately recognize them as cell towers, but they are, that's the closest facility to this one. And it would not, uh, not change that sixty-five-foot radius from these particular panels.
Sort of on that topic, I walked the area, knocked on doors and said, "What do you guys think?" And I didn't have anyone say, I think I, I, I probably knocked on twenty doors and talked to maybe nine people, and the nine people, they said, "Fine." I mean, there was no people in the immediate area who were objection to it.
Yeah, so the, the parcel is an entire block, which is about three hundred feet by three hundred feet. This required a notice of a five hundred foot radius from that, which probably captured about twelve blocks, and there's about eight houses per block, so eight times twelve, ninety-six, right? Is I doing my math right there? So, somewhere between seventy and a hundred parcels were notified about this meeting tonight.
Questions for staff?
I like that. I said, I like that.
Any other questions for staff? All right, so let's open up a public hearing. We'll, same rules apply as before, we'll get our, our applicant would like to speak. We'll let you go first, and then we'll open it up to other members of the public.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lobal, I'm with Epic Wireless, in answer to some of the questions regarding the relationship between Epic and Verizon. I'm a site acquisition consultant. Our firm is hired by Verizon to go out and locate, you know, do site acquisition work for Verizon. I've worked on a number of sites in the city over the years. Redwood in Washington was a monopole we built a few years back. Myrtle Town is another, and there's been others. A little perspective, you know, what we're, what we're talking about here is mounting some antennas that transmit a radio signal. That's what it is. It's a radio signal, okay? Eight, I think it's eight antennas, if I'm not mistaken, mounted on the poles of an existing very large structure. And, I can, I'd be very challenged at this point to think of a better located tower that I've ever worked on than this tower. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a dream for a site acquisition vendor, to find an existing water tower that has existing tele, or communications equipment on it. You know, the antennas will be mounted on the legs of this thing, and almost invisible to the folks around there. I understand there's a lot of concerns with, with the general public about radio frequency questions and so forth. We, you know, this site will be fully compliant with all FCC regulations. We've hired D-Tech, which is an extreme expert in the field, flown up from San Diego and is actually here in the audience to answer questions, should you folks or members of the public have questions about that. You know, this, this site is going to fill a very significant gap in coverage and capacity in the city. Okay, so you have two components, coverage and capacity. You know, we're trying to fill a gap, and, you know, what does that mean? Well, it, it would mean that if you're on your cellphone, you might not be able to get onto the network and make a call, in the event of an emergency. You know, God forbid some emergency happens, everybody goes on their cellphones, try to get on, the amount of traffic, you know, is, is problematic. Also, everybody's using their phones now for broadband capacity. The system is overloaded. It simply cannot keep up with the amount of information that's going through the, the network, as proposed. So Verizon hires companies like myself to go out and find suitable locations to fill this very specific geographic area. I think we've got a very well-designed site. I'm very hopeful that you will approve it. I'm here to answer questions, as is my consultant.
And so you are open to some questions?
Absolutely.
Rich, do you have a question?
No.
Are you aware with the, you know, one of, one of my concerns I expressed was the, usually when the city has resources, we ask for requests for proposals and all that kind of stuff. Are you familiar with how the process went, that we?
Unfortunately, I did not handle the lease negotiations. It was from another coworker, and I, and she has since left our company. I came in sort of after the fact, so, not dodging the answer, I just don't have it for you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Little?
Is it unusual for other companies to put their antennas near yours or below yours?
So, it's Lobal, my last name's Lobal, yes, sir. No, it's highly usual, I should say, very commonplace. Other carriers frequently co-locate on existing structures together, stand all the time. I spend probably half of my day talking to AT&amp;Ts and T-Mobiles, you know, those are other carriers. Then there's other tower owners, Crown Castle, US, US and others, many, many others. So, it's very commonplace in today's world. We, we all co-locate all the time.
So, would these panels serve just Verizon customers, or also?
Yes, no, these are strictly for Verizon. We, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta realize that Verizon is licensed to operate on specific spectrum, okay? That, you know, think of your FM radio dial. They can operate at very specific frequencies, and that's theirs. They bought that, that from the FCC, and that's theirs to operate on. AT&amp;T operates on an entirely different band. So, hopefully that answers your question.
I do have a question. So, what are you renting on, on, on the leg of the tower? What, uh, ten feet, twenty feet, thirty feet?
Well, it's a license agreement, we've got specific-
You're not leasing the whole leg?
No, no, and I'd have to look at the, at the license agreement specifically to answer that, but, you know, every lease agreement calls out a lease area, okay? So, we're leasing some ground space to place, I think it's four different equipment cabinets, no generator. There is no noise generating equipment on this facility. The antennas themselves do not make any, any noise. But back to your, back to your question, specific to the lease area, so we, we lease an area around each antenna array. If AT&amp;T or someone other, some other carrier came in, they would lease another lease area. You can't have the antennas directly, directly next to each others. Typically, typically, there's a ten-foot separation, but, you know, they would do a study and determine where they could go and not interfere with the Verizon equipment. So, there, that's a massive facility. There's plenty of room there to accommodate another carrier, and it, it just wouldn't be an issue.
How many, I'm just looking at pictures here, and maybe I missed it in the report. How many antennas per leg?
Sector.
Four?
Do you remember?
I believe it's four per leg.
So, in, in that space, can you add more if you want?
No, our lease is very specific with the city, and it will call out what equipment they want to, that they're installing. So, if Verizon came back and said, we want to double the amount of equipment, they'd have to come back and, and, you know, it wouldn't be, they'd have to come back and renegotiate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Chair, Regan, I think maybe I can address your question about RFPs, this has come up a couple of times.
That would be good if you could clear my mind.
Mr. Lobal, thank you very much.
So, typically, the city would issue an RFP if we were actively searching out-
Thank you, sir.
-something of this nature. It sounds to me like in this case, we were approached first, and then made that decision about whether or not this was a good deal for the city. Again, not your purview to decide whether or not eleven hundred a month was a good deal, that's, that's already been decided, but I think that's why an RFP wasn't issued in this case, because we weren't actively seeking people, we were sought. As you heard from this gentleman, that's, that's his job. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And, I, I just wanted to say, it looks like in this report on page ten, it says the eight, and, eight antennas will be on the side of legs, two per leg, of four legs, and the, in approximately seven point five by one point two-five foot sectors. I think that explains what you were talking about there, Rich. And they'll extend one to two feet out from the tower leg, so that was in the-
What page are you on, Joe?
Page, well, it's on page ten of the report, I don't know what page it is on the, on the screen here, but it's the one, it's the page that has the, it looks like the chain link fencing on it.
Right.
The picture, just look at the, just above that, that picture, there's a, that says right there, the eight antennas will be.
There's also a drawing of it on page twenty-four and twenty-five, that shows you what the panels look like and what the RRUs look like.
So, this is a public hearing, so if, I'm assuming that maybe some of you guys would like to share about this particular issue. If you'd like to share some thoughts or concerns or ask some questions, please come on forward. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dulce Ziegler. I live here in Eureka, two nine, two nine oh four L Street, a block from the tower. I do have some written comments from myself and my partner I'd like to submit, as well as just making verbal comments.
Yep, if you could just hand those to Ms. Kristen. Thanks.
So, a couple of things, I wanted to just start by saying that I familiarize myself with the city ordinance. I'm not sure if you've had the opportunity to look at that, but I did want to draw your attention to a couple of things that may be an opportunity for you to deny this permit, because I don't believe that all of the requirements have been met. First, the public outreach process is specifically outlined here, calling for brightly colored postcard to be mailed out. This is the one we received from the, recently for this public meeting. This is the initial one we received, that was enclosed in a white envelope. Second was requirement for a sign to be posted in a conspicuous area on the property, the tower property. There was no sign, so people that live in the neighborhood who may not actually own their properties had no opportunity to find anything out about the meeting.
There is a sign on that property.
So, we've got, Rich, she's got on the timeline, so we can ask her questions later, but let's let her continue.
And then, thirdly, at the actual meeting, it was in the Eagle House, there was no sign in the lower part of the building, no representative to actually direct you, it was in a very, like, hidden room on the second floor. Several people who told me they were gonna attend did not actually show up, and I, I'm not sure if they couldn't just make it, or if they couldn't find where it was actually being held. It was odd. It was actually very strange. Another important thing, there is, in this ordinance, a call for a public health report, including cumulative effects of any site within two thousand feet. The telecommunications site at the Hebrew Christian Church is within two thousand feet. That is not part of the report, it's not, I don't have the actual chart number. Raquel might have that for you. So, I don't believe that, if that has, that hasn't been supplied to date. So, we have no idea for sure that FCC regulations are gonna be complied with, so I'd like that to be addressed. Prior to today, we weren't notified that there actually had been other sites proposed. We were in contact with Andrew Lisa from Wireless and Raquel, and it was only when I looked at the agenda today that I saw they actually did put forth three sites, not four. So, the other issue in the ordinance, specifically, the primary objective, it says, to encourage and promote location of new wireless telecommunications facilities in areas not zoned for residential use. I know this is public, but it is entirely surrounded by residences. I find that concerning. I'd like you to look at that, please.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts and concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to share some concerns?
I am not good at public speaking.
If you could do me a favor and just grab that mic and pull it down, thank you.
I'm not good at public speaking, so I've typed this out. Oh. My name is Marilyn Field, I live in Henderson Center. There appears to be a lack of accountability with the City of Eureka and the issuance of permits for cellphone tower installations and attachments. At this time, there are cellphone towers within a few blocks of the proposed additions to the city water tower. There are already four existing cellphone towers directly across the street from the city water tower at the old Hebrew Christian Church. There is a block in between, and the Boys and Girls Club will be directly between all these cellphone towers. Several years ago, I attempted to find out from the city how the permits were issued to the Hebrew Christian Church. Absolutely nobody could tell me who issued them, when they were issued, how they were issued. There are now four cell towers there, started out with one, and they keep growing. At the current time, Verizon has a cellphone tower stealth as a church bell at the Apostolic Church on the corner of Williams and Harris. It's approximately four blocks from the city water tower. I have questions regarding this facility. The church is up for sale, and who's, who is Verizon paying the revenue to, and who is monitoring that tower? There's absolutely nobody at the church. Before the planning commission issues any more permits for cellphone towers or additions to the water tower, questions need to be answered. There needs to be a citywide coverage and a moratorium on permits until some of the questions are answered. If the city doesn't send out requests for proposal for this cellphone tower, which is an ideal location for cellphone towers, then they are greatly lacking, because all the cellphone companies would be fighting for this tower, and you could, you could open it up for the highest bidder. Eleven hundred dollars is what they would pay you as an individual, if you had an acre of land to put a cellphone tower on, they'd pay you eleven hundred dollars or more. And the city is getting eleven hundred dollars? That's insane. Something is very wrong with this deal. I'm saying you need to deny it and let them reapply, but to let it go through the way it is, is all wrong. And if nothing else, the Boys and Girls Club is going to be completely surrounded by cellphone towers. Four on one side, there on the block right between all these cellphone towers. There's something wrong. And I know the FCC has said, you can't, you can't say anything about health problems, but if it comes up in the future, city's gonna be the one that's gonna have to pay for the lawsuit, so you better be getting all the money you can for it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Field. I, I'm not sure I believe you when you say that you're bad at public speaking. You certainly are excellent at public reading, but thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Anybody else? Anybody? Yes, come on down. Don't be bashful. This is, while you're coming, I often describe this as the city's living room. It's a chance for us as a family to get together and share our best thoughts about how the, you know, what would be best for our city. So, it's a great opportunity to come and share. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. My name is Leslie Leach, and I live in Eureka, catty corner from the water tower. And it just seems to me that part of this permit process is to provide a public good. It also seems to me that this, in particular, is not a public good, it's a good for Verizon customers. I'm just curious if anybody besides me sees that difference. The other thing I wanted to point out is, when they were going through the slides, there was one that said, and I'm not sure what it was in reference to, but it said, it was predicted to be something. I would like to reexamine that and see what it, what is predicted to be. I would like things a little more solid.
Yes, ma'am. So, clock is ticking, so Raquel's working on that, but if you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mrs. Leach, for coming in. Anybody else? I saw another hand.
My name is Joel Ziegler. I'm a Eureka resident. I was born in Eureka in nineteen forty-seven. My father was born in Eureka as well. I would rent almost about manager-style city government, because the presentation that I saw tonight was not in the public interest. It was a job to sell you the commissioners on a project that was committed by the city manager. He is the one that committed the city's name to the application for this project. I call it tower lice. I've watched the water tower, and at the top of it, it looks like a bunch of silverfish clustered on the top, and now they're gonna put some lice crawling up the side. They may be saying that they're small, they're body-colored, but like head lice, they're insidious. They need to be examined fully. When the city manager got an offer, when they came forward, Epic came forward to try to get this site, he should have come to the city council and asked for a referral for proposal. That would have been in the city's interest to maximize leverage in the market. It was not done. I would say to you, nullify this contract. Nullify it on the base that is not aesthetically pleasing, and it would damage property values. That's your, about your only way out. The International Association of Firemen have asked cities and municipalities and districts across the country to refrain from installing radio frequency towers within their training and living quarter areas. So, if- So if you're willing to throw your first responders under the bus, and no one in the city here has claimed that any communication for emergency services have been hindered, they say, oh, it'll be better. Well, if it's not being hindered, and you're going to give it this priority to one company over a deal by the city manager without a proposal from the other carriers, it seems ridiculous in the governance of the city.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts, Mr. Ziegler. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Guy. I live in Eureka on K Street at 2914. I urge you to deny the application as it is tonight. First, I think it's important for the public to get a look at the parameters of the lease, and Mr. Ames said he had to go find it. I'd like to take a look at it. Also, the applicant was saying that other cell facilities could co-locate on the water tower through this lease, and if that's true, who's getting the additional rent from those carriers? Does it go to Verizon, or does it come to the city? I also think it's important to understand why the previous cell application from five or six years ago was denied before we go through with approving this application. And that is all.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Guy.
Wait, stop.
Are you, Ms. Guy, you do not have to answer questions from us. No, you do not. You are not under any obligation whatsoever, but Mr. Ames-
I will hear it.
Thank you. I didn't have to go find it. I had to go ask for it, the loan agreement.
Did that sound like a question to you?
Not at all.
I didn't think so either.
A nice statement.
Thank you, Mrs. Guy, for coming up and sharing your thoughts. Anybody else?
Good evening, commission members and city staff. My name is Phil Perez. I live at 2618 B Street in the City of Eureka. I've walked the water tower area. It is a very walkable neighborhood. I have concerns about the proposal. On page 102 of the staff report, it shows the existing water tower photo-
Mr. Perez, my fellow commissioner here can't hear you. If you can speak directly into the mic.
Okay, can I have that time subtracted for my minutes?
Yes, we'll give you some extra.
Okay. On page 102 of the staff report, it shows a photo of the water tower with one of the cell towers at the corner of J and Wood Streets. Okay, I'm holding up a picture of the other towers that are on the corner of J and Wood Streets, and they were fortunate that they showed the tower on page 102. You see a tower that's shrouded, okay? The other towers that are on the corner of J and Wood Streets are an abomination because these antennas are not shrouded, and the cabling is not in raceways, and it's an abomination. So I take issue with a previous statement that says that the installation will be almost invisible. That's fallacious. They're pulling wool over your eyes, and this proposal should be denied because it's an abomination to those of us who walk the area. You know, open your eyes and look and see what has been approved. Now, when we came to a meeting to protest this installation, and we were told that the structure could not accept the additional load, the wind load, to shrouds. You're not in that situation now, so please do not allow this to go forward. See how the antennas, okay? You have to understand that everything is fixable, and you are making aesthetic decisions, and you should not be duly influenced by the applicant, and you must do what's best for the community. And the community is imploring you, I believe, because you're acting as a design review committee now, is that you must put that design review committee hat on and demand shrouds in something that's called raceways, okay? I want that extra time.
Yep, and you still have 30 seconds.
The other thing is that they're putting cable, they're putting clamps on the legs of these towers. These towers are not designed for that tangential load, and you're going to have these towers with these three, these tangential loads, and I'm telling you, my professional opinion that you need to have a structural engineer investigate this. The Office of State Fire Marshal ultimately has jurisdiction over this, and I believe that the Office of State Fire Marshal will require that an engineering analysis be performed on this tower. This is not the same thing as putting tower installations on a monopole. You're doing something on an essential facility. I don't know if you people really understand what an essential facility is. This tower, you're putting these clamps, you're girdling the legs of these legs with cable clamps, you're introducing tangential forces on these. Take a paper towel tube and press down on your hands, then take your fingers and pinch on it and see how it collapses. That's what you're doing to the legs of those towers. Now, when you have your Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, and that tower comes down, the four of you are going to be responsible for that, and the city attorney is going to come bill you out, okay? If you do not require at least to have a structural engineer look at this. I know the only engineer of record is an electrical engineer-
How about another 15 seconds?
Mr. Dangtech, he's an electrical engineer. That's the only engineer I see of record of this. You need to have a structural or a good civil engineer, and I'm not looking for work, but you need to have someone look at this who knows what they're doing, and I don't believe there's anyone in the city. And I love the city people, but I think that you need to have someone know what they're doing. Look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
You can deny it because aesthetically it's not pure.
Thank you, sir.
You need to have a structural engineer look-
I really appreciate you coming down. Really do. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Wait, wait. You've already spoken.
I asked to see the slides.
Oh, so hold that thought, and maybe when we bring it back to the commission, we'll be able to see that.
It's on the screen.
Would anyone else?
Can the applicant get another remote?
No, maybe, but not by privilege. But would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to share some concerns? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. We'll return the item to the commission, and certainly if the commissioners have any questions about points raised by, you know, during public comment, if you'd like to ask staff, or if maybe you'd like to ask the applicant about something that was raised. More than happy to do that.
I'd like to ask the applicant if he has any knowledge of the structural integrity of the towers.
Mark Lowbaugh, Epic Wireless, once again. So I just want to remind you, this is a planning commission hearing. As a separate permit, we're required to pull a building permit. In the building permit process, it will include a structural analysis, as would any tower. That's just standard operating procedure done by a, you know, structural engineer, not a civil engineer, and all those questions would be answered.
Excellent. While you're there, are there any other questions for Mr. Lowbaugh that arose out of the public testimony? Yes, ma'am, Miss Mayor.
Why weren't the proper color of notices sent out the first time?
Hmm, I-
I'm sorry, it wasn't a color issue, it was that it was not shrouded in an envelope. Some of our neighbors didn't get them.
If, I hate to cut you off, but we have to, the recording is the official, is the official record of the meeting, and so if we have testimony, you know, off-mic, it's not part of the meeting and stuff. So we might get you back up in a minute, but for now-
So the short answer is that I talked to my coworker, who provided the noticing, and she provided what the requirement was according to staff. The staff informed them exactly what was required, and we complied with what we thought were the requirements. We provided a noticing, what is it?
Radius.
Circumference, radius, and complied with that. I believe we also provided all the addresses. Okay, so in terms of the color-
Very good. Mr. Benino.
And the signage was also posted on the site. I'm told that there was signage placed on site.
So what you're saying is during the building permit process, which you're not into yet-
Correct, on the structural engineering.
That's when the structural engineering concerns of Mr. Perez are going to be addressed.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so that's another thing you guys still have to hop over that before.
It's another permit.
So if that doesn't pass, then the whole thing's dead anyways.
That's correct.
Okay. While Mr. Lowbaugh is here, any other questions that arose? Thank you very much, sir. Rob, you reaching for the mic? What you got?
A lot of stuff, but to maybe help with one thing with the structural component, what we're currently doing is a discretionary permit process, where there are a number of regulations written into the code, and then it is your job as the planning commission to interpret those and make a decision, a discretionary decision. The building code process is ministerial in that there is no discretion involved. It is merely checklists and diameters and lengths, and so the building department doesn't make discretionary decisions. They confirm that an application as submitted complies with the California Building Code. And so as the applicant indicated, they still have to go through the building permit process. If tonight is approved, then they will go through the building permit process, and they will have to comply with the California Building Code as written, and there's really no flexibility in that.
Excellent. Anything else while you get the mic?
Well, if it's helpful, I'll leave it up to you whether you want to do this. I could go over to the screen over here, pull up the municipal code and go into detail by showing you the use permit section of the municipal code and show you exactly the action that you're taking tonight. I can go into the public zone district and explain the purposes and just details about the public zone, as well as design review process. It's not too often that you act as the design review committee. We only do that when a project has both a use permit and design review, instead of requiring applicants to go to both committees, and it takes extra time. Per your direction, a couple of years ago, you said, let's consolidate our process, do some streamlining. So if you would like, I can share with you the designer review section of the code as well.
If anyone would like that, Joe says yes, so you can start moseying over there. We closed the public hearing. The item's been returned to the council, so we can have a motion, we can have more questions, we can have discussion.
I hear the concerns, and I live in the neighborhood, so I appreciate the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I don't like being called you people, but I'll move on from that. So, because I am your people now, I am. I, so I hear you, what you're saying. But just to be clear, Rob, our job really here is to decide if this is within the code of, this is new zoning code.
No. So Kristin just brought this to my attention, which is, makes it more difficult for me. This applicant applied before the new code took effect, and so they are operating under the previous zoning code. So I'm less familiar with the details of that, and so it'll be a little bit more difficult for me to walk you through those. But it's all in your staff report there. But yes, what you're saying is true. You are not an unlimited overriding decision-making body here. You are acting within very limited parameters of the Eureka Municipal Code, and your findings of whether it's approval, approval of conditions, or denial have to be within the parameters of the law as it's written. So it's not your job to say whether or not you like the law, but whether or not the application complies with the law.
Sure. So as long as we're saying it's zoned correctly, it's going in the correct area. The other mitigating circumstances as far as emissions and aesthetics don't really apply to the decision we're about to make.
Aesthetics would, under the criteria of the design review section of the municipal code.
According to the old code and not the current code.
Correct. So there are-
That's disappointing.
Yeah.
And that's in either code. I mean, in either case-
Both codes have design review, they're just slightly written differently, yeah.
I, for one, am inclined to support the project, but I feel like I'm not, I don't have enough evidence about the process, about the process, about how we got here. And I would appeal to the applicable regulations at the top of page seven, item B, that says that we have to find that this project is not, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. That, you know, it's our job. The objectives just below that on page seven, on paragraph one, "objectives of chapter 155 and purpose of the district pursuant to Eureka Municipal Code. The zoning regulations are adopted in accordance with City Charter to protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare." I can't, I don't know. I wish the city property manager were here so that we could hear the process and how it came about. Without that, or someone that could speak to that, without that, I would like to see us continue this to a special meeting as soon as we possibly could and get her here to answer questions, so that, I would like to vote yes, but I cannot vote yes tonight.
If it's helpful, I can provide you a little bit more information. So it's not an exclusive lease, and by the city's competitive bidding rules, this is well under the threshold of any limits that would trigger a competitive process. And the city could get extra revenue if we were to lease other portions of the facility, if others were interested, and Epic approached the city directly and no others have within the past five years to Public Works Director's knowledge.
Did we reach out? I mean, we know, we have, we have a list of all the permits that have been issued for all the cell towers in the city. Did we proactively reach out? I mean, that's, we're talking about welfare, the prosperity of the city. I have no idea if these, if the terms in the report are reasonable market rate, you know, whatever, but without the information about that process, I don't feel like I can say that this is in the city's best, you know, best interest, general welfare, yet.
I'm not trying to convince you, just providing you with information. To my knowledge, no, the city did not reach out to additional providers, only worked with the one that approached us directly.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you brought attention to this particular page, because I'm noting that it's also talking about the effect on property values, and I don't think that that's been discussed here at all tonight, that as a resident, does that, will that negatively affect your property value?
I heard Ms. Raquel say that in the report, that the assessment is that it won't affect property values, but that would certainly be something that's open for discussion here. I, I think it's a mixed bag. Good cell reception increases property values, ugly cell towers decrease property values, and at what balance? I do think, I appreciate the one thing one citizen brought forward with the towers at the Hebrew Christian Church, those look differently than they did when we approved them. And what is the process? If they look significantly different, if they look significantly uglier, what is the process to get that cleaned up? That'd be an interesting discussion for another time, but-
Well, I think it goes to show, too, that we have to make these decisions thoughtfully and consider that, you know, the future implication.
Raquel, could you go to Street View? And go to the intersection of, say, Sixth and J. Look there, there's my office. Oh, you just missed it. And you're looking to the left, we're going to be looking west. If you can go down that street some. Kristin, am I heading in the right direction here? One more block. Keep going. We want to see it from a distance. Two more. Turn to the right. Zoom in on that. Use the track ball. Yep. So- So that brick building in the background there is the building that Domino's Pizza is in. You can see six cell antennas hanging off the top of the building there. On, it's hard to see, but in the corner to the left, Raquel, right up there, they're rectangular panels hanging off the roof. Yep, right there. Those six are the same shape and size as what we're talking about going on the tower here. So you've probably driven by those and seen those without realizing that they're cell towers, they're painted red the same as the building. It's my understanding that in this particular project, the panels are to be painted the exact same color as the recently painted water tower, if that's at all helpful. You'd have to zoom, you'd have to go down the block, there you go. Go one more and then do the trackball trick again.
The tree's in the way.
Maybe just move forward just slightly, yeah, and then trackball in. So if you go up to the third floor, you can actually look out the window and see those, and as you're driving by, you'll see them regularly. Those are the same shape and size.
We probably will never be able to unsee them now, Rob, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, so there's not a motion on the floor. Does anyone desire to make a motion? I just expressed an idea. But I will move that we continue this item to a date specific. Do you have any proposal? I would like it to be way before August 29th. Does anybody else think that's a good idea?
I wouldn't mind.
I'm going to call that a second, Joe. Any discussion about that idea? So let's vote on it first, then we'll find a date. Let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of continuing it to a date coming up before the 29th, say aye? Aye. That's four. Anybody opposed? It's good to know we're all listening. So, let's continue it, let's find a date.
Let's, well, first of all, we have to find a date that we at least know will get a quorum.
Right.
So we do not have Commissioner Ariaga with us, so we'll have to just hope that we can get her. If not, then we'll need the four of you, or at least three of you. Some bad dates. August 20th is a city council meeting. I would say the week of August 26th is a bad idea, it's just getting too close to the 29th. So that provides us with the rest of this week and next week. Of this week.
I am available Friday of this week. And we, and it doesn't have to be at this time, it can be any time during the day.
I will be out of the office on this Friday, but that doesn't.
I'm available Thursday during the workday.
How about the 21st of the week after?
Let's pause for a moment. Kristin has a brilliant question. What is it that you want out of this continuing meeting? Because we may need some time to pull the thing you want together. So what is it that we're trying to accomplish at this?
What I would like is have our property manager or someone else familiar with the process by which this whole application and lease started. My concern is others in the city that maybe didn't know this was an option and didn't get a chance to apply for it, or that, some assurance in some way that there was a process by which fair market value truly was determined.
I suspect you're going to be disappointed. It'll be the Public Works Director, and what he's going to tell you is that Epic Wireless approached the city directly, the city did not go out for a competitive process, that the threshold is under the requirements of city regulation for competitive process, and I don't think he's going to have much else to say.
And that's, you know, if he says that, then it's under the requirement, and that might sway my thinking one way or the other. Anybody else? What else would you like for, from staff at this meeting coming up?
Maybe just a building official to tell us about, you know, what they're going to go through when they do the process of figuring out of girdling the.
That would be Mr. Gerving again, right?
Happens to be the same individual, so.
Whether girdling the legs is going to be detrimental to the water tower, which is very important to us.
Ms. Mayor? Have any specific info you're looking?
I'm not certain that we're getting off the subject of tonight, though. Why we're here tonight.
Not sure I understand what your question is. Okay, so. Speak into your mic.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Okay. So 21st, is Joe's asking about 21st, what day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
I could do that during the day, I could probably do it in the evening.
Evening would be better for me.
No, I can't. I'm going to be in San Francisco the 20th and the 21st, sorry. How about 22nd? 22nd?
One thing is, we've already made a motion and agreed to continue, but I do want to address maybe something that Commissioner Ames was trying to get at, which is if we have somebody come back and talk, Brian Gerving, it sounds like you want to hear from him, what he's going to tell you doesn't really impact what you're being asked to decide, right? That's first of all. Second of all, you do have staff here telling you that the process was followed as required. We have policies and procedures about when RFPs are issued and when they're not issued, and we do depend on our staff and our other elected officials to do property management decisions. So we've answered those questions even though they're outside the purview of what you would be deciding. So I do think that's important to consider.
No, that's what I suggested an hour ago, that I think that the city of, the staff has made a very bad monetary deal for the city. The rent, the lease, 1,100 a month is ridiculous, but I don't think that applies to why we're here tonight.
That's correct. I would agree with that.
There is a section that, and you look at page seven, part D, to ensure that the public and private lands ultimately are used for the purposes which are most appropriate and most beneficial from the standpoint of the city as a whole. And I think that that question would fall under that category quite easily.
So I think that's what Brian would have to tell us. That's his part of it, would tell us why it's beneficial to the city.
So what, so what?
At that rate.
So we've got.
So what if he tells us?
Then we vote to approve it, that's all, just more transparency, a little bit more information for all these people here.
Yep, so we've got a motion, it's passed, so we're, at this point, we're looking for a calendar date. We can always entertain a new motion to undo that, but for the time being, we're looking for a date. 20th, 21st is out, 19th was proposed. 15th is this Friday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Well, they don't have time, well, I don't know, maybe he does have all the information already.
15th? Is there time during the day we could do that?
I am, well, I don't have access to the calendar for this room, so let's suppose the HCOG, for instance, meets in here, as does the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, and so, do you know how to access that calendar?
And do we have to, do we have to have a meeting in this room? Could we have a meeting somewhere else?
This gentleman. HCOG's on Thursday, 4 o'clock. According to the man behind the curtain.
9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 1:00 AM.
Yeah, as long as there's not something else. All right, we have access to the calendar. Well, which day are we talking about?
Thursday, the 15th.
Works for me, work for you, Raquel and Kristin?
At what time?
In the evening sometime, 7:00.
I cannot do evening.
5:30? How long's our meeting take?
I'd suggest morning or early afternoon.
I can't do it in the morning, but, you know, 1:00 would be fine, I think.
Rich, 1:00 Thursday?
I don't, my calendar's at home, I'm sorry.
So let's aim for Thursday at 1:00. We can do the email thing to solidify that, and then whatever proper public notice we need to give for this specific time and place.
How about 3:00 on the 15th?
Works for me. Yes?
3:00 on this Thursday, the 15th.
13th?
15th. 15th, 1-5, it's this Thursday.
HCOG's at 4:00, you said? When's HCOG? 4:00? That same day?
Could the Wizard of Oz please step forward to remind us? For, okay.
I think an hour.
4:00.
4:00, okay.
I think an hour is, would be enough to answer my question.
It's the unsung hero who controls the cameras and listens to every one of these meetings and zooms in and on out of your, on your faces. Okay, 3:00 PM on the 15th gives you one hour to make a decision, and the Public Works Director is available.
By just nodding of head, does that work for most everybody to the best of our knowledge?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And, but we don't do the public hearing and all that stuff. Again, we don't have the people coming in to talk.
It is a public hearing, it's a continuation of this particular public hearing, which has already been noticed, and through this action, you are continuing the item to that meeting, so, to that date. So this meeting will continue, it's not over yet.
But we're still just at the part where the, where we're discussing it and working on.
Correct. If the chair chooses, there could be public comment, but if not, that would be up to the chair.
Yep, it'd actually be up to the council. Yes, sir? Yes, by all means, but please step up to the mic so that we can get that question recorded.
So I want to be properly prepared to answer any questions that you folks are going to have. You know, I've got, I've got four folks that I've driven up here from various locations around California, it's quite expensive. I want to be prepared. So what is the expectation from you folks as to what types of questions, what do I need to, I have a radio frequency engineer that I flew in from San Diego, does he need to make this trip again? I don't know.
I, from what I've heard, the main concern are the structural issues with the banding of the legs and the process that would ensure the general welfare, the best outcome regarding the general welfare of the city, the people of the city of Eureka. So that would be more the.
Sort of broad, but.
Yeah, I know.
I think there are some questions about emissions, is that something that he could speak to?
Today or then? Or later? Today, absolutely, that's why he's here. So if you have questions, I think now would be great.
Absolutely.
It certainly seems to me that there are some questions about it, so, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so, yep, come on up, and we'll ask you specific questions. This is not part of public testimony, public hearing, this is a part of the council asking questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just want to clarify something. Where exactly are we in the meeting right now? Are you still in the middle of a motion?
No, the motion's been made and seconded and voted on and passed. The motion was to, was to continue the hearing until a date certain, until Brian was present. So if someone objects to continued questions because we've already continued the hearing, then we need to do that, but otherwise, I think it's okay to go ahead and continue asking questions.
I'm going to make the call that since we have technical professionals here from outside the area, it's appropriate to continue to ask them questions, as long as everyone in the audience, as long as no one left thinking that the meeting was over.
Correct. Okay, who's got a technical question? Ms. Mayor?
I think there's just been some questions about the density of towers in the area and how that will affect the emissions.
My name is Durang Tek, good evening, commissioners and staff members. The emissions of surrounding sites are going to be, because the issue is distance, they're so far away, when you're talking about 2,000 feet, that is going to be negligible compared to the emission right near the Verizon proposed antennas. And one more thing that someone was asking about, why is it predicted? Now, when you do a prediction, it's actually worst case than, than an actual measurement, because you're looking at, all the channels are active at one time. Basically, all the mobile calls are active at maximum power, which is really never, never the case, because mobile's going to be at random distances from the tower. And when, and then their, their power is going to be adjusted accordingly, very quickly. So you look at the prediction, that's one thing that's unrealistic, and then two, that there's no attenuation from the foliage or the buildings lost. So it's assumed that sometimes attenuation or weakening of signals like that from those sources would be as much as by a factor of 10. And then we look at like ground reflection, for example, ground reflection, we look at it like, as if it was perfect reflectors, which they're not. So when we do a prediction, it's actually much more worse case, it's really, when you measure it, it's actually well below that in reality.
Thank you, that was an incredibly informative answer.
One more thing I'd like to add is that, you know, I have a cell, I have an iPhone XR. If you look up, if you Google the emissions level from the iPhone, obviously it has to be less than 100% of the FCC limit. Actually, it's 9, it could go as high as 99%. And when we're talking about a cell site that is 87 feet tall and you're on the ground, it's basically shooting away from you, and you're looking at 0.5% on the ground. So, so you can see the comparison, and here it's right at your face, right? So the good news is that, well, another way of looking at it is that when you're, when there's a cell site near you, your phone, which is really up to your face, will transmit a lot less, a lot less power, because it's.
Because it's close to the cell site?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for, and I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Durang Tek, like technology.
Mr. Tek, any other questions?
So you did state, because you'll be the only antennas on that tower, that there isn't that much frequency emission coming off there, so if the city were to then continue to add other companies' antennas there, would that become further of an issue as far as public safety or wildlife issues?
There, because it's so high, you don't get cell sites at 87 feet anymore these days, because it's so high, it's really, it's really not an issue for, even for other carriers.
Any other questions for Mr. Tek?
I just want to add that if another carrier was to come in, they would need a use permit, and then they would be required to provide an additional cumulative analysis, and at that point, you'd be able to look at that analysis and make sure that it still complies with FCC requirements. So.
Sure, I respect that. Own a restaurant, first come, first served is an okay objective, for sure.
So we've provided a cumulative analysis already for this site, that D-Tech has provided.
Thank Mr. Lowball, thank you. All right, any other questions regarding technical aspects? Well, we have technical experts here. And do we have the ability on Thursday to allow people to attend via Skype or phone? To attend from a distance via Skype or phone?
Yes, yeah, I have heard of cases where people can call in to a meeting. Technically, according to the Brown Act, they're supposed to post the meeting as well at their location, so anybody that's there, so, for instance, at one point, a council member had to call in from a hotel in San Diego, had to post a notice on the door of their hotel and keep the door open in case, because it's a public meeting on both ends of the conversation. For whatever that's worth. Okay, so that's only for commissioners or elected officials, it's not for the technicians that call in, it's part of a staff report.
So, Mr. Lowball, if you'd like to have some of your technical experts available via phone or Skype, talk with Mr. Homeland, and we'll do everything we can to accommodate that so that we don't cost you unnecessarily. Yes, ma'am?
Are there, are there any other experts here that would speak appropriately to any of the questions or issues that have come up tonight?
No, I think, I think I will likely attend and will have, will have D-Tech available via Skype or phone or some methodology, and, no. In short answer is no, I think, I think we can cover it. And that there aren't any other experts, so to speak, in the on, these are coworkers that are with me, that come down to see how the site works and how the proceedings would go.
Perfect, all right. Thank you guys for your cooperation, really do, yes, thank you. Any other, so the next item on the agenda is reports. Are we ready to move past this item, save everything else for Thursday, and go to reports and communications?
Just for clarity, Mr. Chair, this particular public hearing is. Just for clarity, Mr. Chair, this particular public hearing is concluded for the evening and continued to August 15th at 3 PM in this room.
Correct. So next items, old and new business, we don't have any. Next item is reports and communications. Thanks, everyone, for coming and sharing your thoughts, appreciate you coming down. Any reports and communications, Rob? No, sir. Counselors, commissioners? Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Any objections? We're continuing that item, but we are adjourning this meeting.